To have some input from.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not just Presbyterian churches like I don't even know who they like. Yeah, like I don't even know who they are. So just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, it's seven o'clock Eastern daylight time. So I will call to order our August 12th Planning Commission meeting. Before we hit the agenda, I'm going to defer to Dr. Berthyr to report.
So some of you may know that, well, if you've ever watched a city council or Planning Commission meeting, it's been televised and for the last four years or so, it's been by Mr. Glenn Chaconi, if I'm pronouncing his last name correctly. And Glenn did a wonderful job for the city of Oxford. It's one of those quiet unsung roles. It's literally up in a room that most of us don't know someone is in there, except that the meetings are effectively filmed and, and one of those quiet sorts of things. But if you ever had the chance to talk to Glenn, he was, as you know, in past tense, he was really one of the most delightful people you'd have a chance to talk with. So he was watching the meetings and he was watching the meetings. He was paying attention to them and had very nice and affirming things to say about the work that public servants do. So he passed away suddenly and, which is really sad, but just wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge Glenn and thank him for all of his service to us. I hope he's golfing up there in the sky.
One of my favorite memories was when we had the tornado warning. We all got to, you know, chit chat while we should have been, you know, focusing on the weather channel. So, all right, thank you, sir. All right, I will accept a motion for approval of the agenda or any changes that folks might have.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cruff with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, same for the minutes. I'll accept a motion in a second. Any additions, changes, corrections to the minutes? All right, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Dr. Berthyr with the motion?
Second.
Ms. Webster with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, it passes. All right, at this time, we will entertain comments from the public for items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you would like to address the commission, feel free to come on up. There's absolutely no one moving, so we're going to see that as, you know, clear indication that we'll move on to reports from boards, commissions, committees, and staff. Dr. Berthyr, we'll start on your side.
I don't think we have anything to, I will let Ms. Webster talk about the Climate Action Steering Committee since I was not there. Parking and Transportation, we have a meeting coming up, but I've kind of defer to staff on some of that stuff. I would report on what we're working on for the Planning Commission as a subcommittee on the zoning code rewrite, but also a transportation planning, which bears on the Planning Commission, but I'll defer to staff on that stuff.
Perfect. Mr. Bracken?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything too relevant from the environmental commission right now.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Webster?
So I may defer to Mr. Bracken. I did attend, but I was late for the Environmental Action Committee. But what was, the big picture was that we had a presentation from interns that were working in the department, working with Marina Murphy on, they're from Green Umbrella, and they were doing some data and analysis, but maybe you could elaborate what their findings? I wasn't clear if there were any significant findings.
There were, but they were smaller in nature and they kind of had a singular purpose that ended up blowing up into like doing everything. And they loved it and they were really, really helpful, but it wasn't one single conclusion from it that is notable. It's just.
They were really lovely and everyone, I was very impressed with the amount of time and effort that they had spent.
We were so pleased, we would like to keep this going again and again and again. It was, it was very helpful to us.
Perfect.
They were great.
Nothing to report from CIC?
Perfect. HAPC has a meeting tomorrow, technically a work session. We're just going to go over design guidelines, historic, you know, the consultant work. That's about all I have. So, Mr. Moore, Mr. Perry, I will just open up to the two of you and you can first fit as you want.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to report on the progress of the Oxford Unified Development Code Working Group. So we've had three meetings thus far and we meet every first and third Tuesday of the month. So we've made fairly considerable progress thus far. We're getting into the district standards at this point. Probably not too much to share substantively at this point, but once we find a natural breaking point, we'll certainly bring our recommendations to the full commission and we'll have another work session to talk about it.
Perfect.
Thank you. On behalf of the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, we have a meeting on Monday to prepare for the September 17th Public Open House for the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan that we're doing in partnership with BCRTA, the Regional Transit Authority. So the Monday meeting is really, it's not that it's not a public meeting, but it's just to prepare for the September Public Open House. Been working for the past several months with a, with a consultant team to develop some potential priority corridors that could lead to schematic designs and potential future grant funding for transportation improvements in the community that would help with access to bus stops and just general multimodal transportation. So that project will be wrapping up early next year, but September 17th, as I said, at the library, so Wednesday evening, will be, 6:30, will be the Public Open House of the draft plan. Thank you.
Not necessarily related to this, but Mr. Perry brought up regional transit. We're just over 100 days from opening the multimodal station and also if you've happened to see any of the bus signs, they've already switched to the O-lines from the U-lines. So more of a public service announcement for everyone. All righty, with that, we'll move on to new business. So we will do PC 2025-09-1701 Lake Forest Drive. First is a zoning map amendment. Let's see, it's Mr. Clausen's the applicant. We will start with Mr. Moore and I will entertain a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
Move that we enter into public hearing.
Dr. Berthyr with the motion?
Second.
Mr. Cruff with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Watt. So what I figured I would do, since the first two cases on the agenda are both related to the same project, I'm just going to present one time on the entire project and then essentially, I imagine it'll be two motions that will have to be made at the conclusion of the hearing. So this is a map amendment as well as a preliminary subdivision request. This is for a brand-new subdivision to be named Lake Forest Cove. The map amendment portion would be to rezone the property, roughly 18 acres in total, from the multifamily residential R4 district to single and two-family residential or R2A district. And I suppose the primary impetus for rezoning in this manner from multifamily to two-family is to then qualify for the open space residential subdivision option, which is provided in the code. It's provided as a voluntary option for any property that's zoned single-family or two-family. So presently, the 18 acres that's zoned R4 does not technically qualify, hence the reason why the rezoning is tethered to the subdivision request. So essentially, any property that's at least five acres in size, it's a voluntary option that a developer can exercise when they're undergoing the subdivision request. So that in summary is what we are considering here tonight. So the applicant for the request, as was mentioned, is Mr. Jim Clausen, Fourleaf Development LLC, which owns the property. And the engineer who is here tonight, it's Bayer Becker, represented by Etta Reed, President Etta Reed. And as I mentioned already, the site area is approximately 18 acres. Current zoning R4, rezoning to R2A for that open space residential subdivision, which would consist of 34 single-family lots. So that's 34 total dwelling units upon completion. And then just to get you acquainted with the site, so this is on the southeast side of town off of US 27. So you can see Kettering Medical Center over here, Level 27 apartments, the Annex complex. So the area that is outlined in black, this is about 65 acres or so. In total, 97 acres is owned by Fourleaf Development. So actually, this rather large parcel up here, this wooded area, is also under Fourleaf Development ownership. But this, everything that's shown in black here is technically one large parcel. It has one parcel ID number and it is split among the two sides of Lake Forest Drive. So essentially, when Lake Forest Drive went in, the right-of-way was dedicated and it created what we would term in GIS as a multi-part feature. So both halves of Lake Forest Drive are technically considered one property. And looking at the existing land use within the region, so everything in green, which comprises everything that is within that subject property, is presently undeveloped. It's in agricultural or rural use. And you can see, of course, off to the west, the developed portions of town, kind of in the outskirts of Oxford, multifamily associated with Level 27 and kind of the northern portion of the Annex. And then Annex proper, if you will, two-family and single-family residential. We have the gas station, the Shell gas station that's commercial, and then we have medical use, of course, with Kettering. We have Hope Dale Unitarian further to the south, as well as a part of the Tallawanna High School property that is down there to the lower left. Then here is a look at our comprehensive plan. So you can see that the entirety of the subject property is classified as urban neighborhood. And there's a lot that goes into this particular character type. Some other recommendations, a variety of housing types, mixture of uses, walkable design, compact development, embracing of new urbanist principles, possibly some small neighborhood-scale retail. That kind of generally is the gist of the urban neighborhood classification. And just to mention too, so in terms of usage, it says that attached and detached single-family as well as multifamily are appropriate uses for this character. And then looking at the current zoning classifications, so of the total 97 acres that is owned by Fourleaf, there's about 30 acres or so up here at the top of the map that's R1A. There's 37 acres that is R4 that kind of spills over a little bit onto the adjoining parcel, these two little horns, I guess you'll call them. R2A to the south, that is about 30 acres. And there were previously some development proposals down to the south that are largely expired at this point. The Stafford Court touches on those. Those would be the South Forest Edge proposals. So there was the 36 Land Dominion proposal, which was the first one on kind of that north or west side of Lake Forest, depending on which area you're standing. And then to the east and to the south was South Forest Edge Section 2. That was a 21-lot subdivision. That one has since expired. The 36-unit proposal is technically still valid until April of next year. But the primary challenge that was encountered with developing either side had to do with getting sewer service, sewer service to that particular side of the property to the south. Either by doing a very long extension up to the treatment plant, which is actually on the map, you can kind of see the southern edge of it. This is the wastewater treatment plant. So trying to get the sewer service up to gravity feed up to that plant was quite a heavy lift in terms of either doing a connection or installing a lift station. So financially, it just proved to be too much of an obstacle to develop those portions of land at the present time. And so now the developer is choosing to focus on an area of the site that can actually gravity feed into the plant without the need for a lift station or a lengthy costly connection. So I'll flip back and forth here a couple times to show you the difference between the current zoning map and then the proposed. So what you can see here is essentially that the R2A zone would be expanded further north. And this would comprise the 18 acres that would make up Lake Forest Drive. There's also a tiny little sliver on the west side of Lake Forest that's technically zoned R4, but again, it's part of that same parcel. And the applicant has more or less agreed to a friendly amendment to make sure that that gets rezoned to R2A as well. So it's all contiguous R2A would be the final result, all the way across from the Annex to the undeveloped land to the south and to the property to the east. So that's the proposed zoning. Now zooming into the site aerial, so just to get you acquainted with the site, so here's Lake Forest Drive, here's the end of South Point Parkway, this is the Annex over here, this is the multifamily portion, this is the single-family portion. So the address for the overall property is 1701 Lake Forest Drive and that corresponds to a house and a storage building that is tucked away in the woods here. And there's a rather long driveway, as you can see, which connects over. And there's also a pond in the center here. And staff did go out and visit the site on July 24th. It was a beautiful day, took a number of photos. So this is a view of the prairie, it's just south of the pond, it's a view of the driveway. Here's some more views of the pond and then looking toward the Annex to the west, small little dock on the pond there. And then here's some views of those two structures in the back, which would be retained on the remainder of the site. And then here's a look at the intersection of South Point and Lake Forest. So this is looking north where there is currently a stub on Lake Forest. Okay, so getting into some more of the details here, so here's again a view of where that driveway runs. So the curb cut is right here off of Lake Forest. There's also a Blue Line stream that runs to the south. This is Lick Run. A Blue Line stream is a regulated stream. So with respect to this stream, there was a prior study that was done to determine what the 100-year flood limits would be. So these are not the FEMA-regulated flood zones, but this is flood zones that was determined from a private study. And so you can see what the limit, kind of the general limit of that stream would be if it were to flood out to its maximum width within the 100-year flood. And then here is a look at the proposed subdivision. So you can see that the lots respect that 100-year boundary, keeping that well within the open space. So total 34 lots comprising about seven acres in total area. The open space is about nine acres. And if I flip back and forth between this slide and this slide, you can see that this portion of the driveway would be retained and essentially would be shortened and hooked up to instead be on East South Point Parkway. So that would be a new public street as opposed to dead-ending here at Lake Forest Drive. So I believe the intent is for the, some of the remaining portions of this driveway to be reestablished, if you will, as a walking trail that's part of the open space, so becoming amenity, an amenity for the subdivision. And this would also leave about 17.8 acres as a remainder. Again, that's where the existing house and storage building would be retained beyond that property. And then, as you can see, there's quite a bit of acreage up here that would, as of yet through this proposal, remain undeveloped, but that could be preserved for potential future development. If this proves to be successful and the market dictates that there should be additional product, then there would be that opportunity to further subdivide in the future and seek another preliminary subdivision request for that region. Okay, so here's a closer in view. So this gives you a sense for those 34 lots, there would also be a proposed clubhouse, so an amenity that would be maintained by a homeowners' association. That is part of the plan is to have the common open spaces owned and maintained by homeowners' association. And then you can see the walking trail network that is proposed throughout those open spaces. So one other thing to note here, the two public streets that are proposed, East South Point Parkway and Timber Cove Trail, those are names that are being proposed here with the preliminary. It's not often known at this point what the proposed street names are, but in this particular case, we have some names that are being floated in terms of those future public streets that would be dedicated. And then here is a look at the topography and I think this really helps give you a sense for the development activity being kind of concentrated in those portions of the site that are more level and not as steep, not as sensitive. So you can see there's quite a bit of steep slope. Anywhere where there's contour lines that are really close together, that indicates that there's steeper slopes. So the places where, you know, houses would naturally be built along these lots, you can see it's relatively flat here, so there would be some steeper drop-offs in those rear yards, but it's unlikely that you would see a lot of building activity to the rear. But having a lot of that wooded area in the back there should be a nice natural amenity for those that would be moving into these lots and building homes on them. Okay, and then here's a more detailed look at the amenities. So already mentioned the trail. There would be sidewalks built on both sides of the street in accordance with our subdivision regulation requirement. And there's also a proposal for a bike path along the east side of Lake Forest Drive, as shown in blue here. That would be a 10-foot-wide path. And then there would also be sidewalk on the west side of Lake Forest here on this northern stub. And then in terms of the driveway connection back to 1701, there would be a 20-foot or 25-foot-wide driveway easement reserved because this would all be property that would be owned by the HOA. So in order to retain the right-of-way across that driveway for, you know, whomever would own, ultimately own that, that property, the easement would be reserved for that to ensure that they can in fact continue to access that home. Then here is a look at the landscaping plan. So they are showing street trees in accordance with the subdivision regulations, in accordance with the zoning code. Zoning code requires one tree be planted for every front yard area. So these lighter green trees are shown as front yard trees. We check for that at the time of final inspection when these homes are built. And one thing I did notice is the street trees were missing on this southern segment of Lake Forest Drive. So we do have a recommended condition that would put in some street trees on that one side, leading all the way down to where the existing driveway meets Lake Forest. Okay, so with the map amendment, there are four specific criteria that are laid out in the zoning code and only one of these needs to be met in order to justify a rezoning. So letter A is just simply stating, you know, if there's an error on the zoning map, that this map amendment process is a way to correct for that. That doesn't apply in this situation. Letter B, whether the proposed amendment will make the map conform more closely with the comprehensive plan. So in effect, what's happening here by going from R4 to R2A, this is a pretty significant downzone in terms of the potential density that could be accommodated on the site and in terms of the, you know, what the, what the plan expresses as ideal characteristics for development in this urban neighborhood zone, that it can be a mix of uses, that it can be multifamily, that it can have some degree of commercial, that it can be a more walkable or more urbanist-style community. You know, a lot of that is being kind of left out of this particular proposal. I think what this proposal does embrace, it does embrace some elements. It embraces meaningful open space, it embraces trail connectivity, pedestrian connectivity. Certainly, our comprehensive plan, the goal of city council is to increase our housing supply overall across the board and certainly this would do that. So in light of all of these considerations, I'm kind of rating B as a question mark. But with respect to C and D, I think there's plenty of evidence to kind of support, you know, whether there's been a substantial change in area conditions or legitimate need for additional land area. I think due in part to a lot of the history that has gone into trying to get something done on this particular property, the prior South Forest Edge proposals, it being very difficult to provide sewer service in general and exercise these zoning rights and allow for development to happen, I think a lot of that can be used or referenced as justification for letters C and D in this particular instance. So with that, the recommendation of the map amendment portion is approval. So this would be 18 acres from the R4 to the R2A. So then moving on to the preliminary subdivision, so again, being able to do an open space residential subdivision that's contingent on having at least single-family or two-family zoning. So if you have the two-family zoning in place, you can do the open space residential. And if I were to kind of characterize what an open space residential subdivision is, essentially, it's like a cluster design option. So the zoning standards can be flexed in a way perhaps typical of a planned development. So you can grant waivers to the, whatever the relevant district standards might be for setbacks, for lot coverage, et cetera. And there are a number of waivers that the developer, of course, is requesting in order to achieve this particular development. In exchange for that, you're reserving a certain portion of the site as open space. Under open space residential, you just need a minimum of 35% of the site to be open space. With the design that's been put forward, it's at 50. So they are well within meeting the minimum open space. So with that, I'll go through the recommended conditions. Condition number one and two stem from an analysis that was done by Butler County Soil and Water. We send every major development proposal to Butler County Soil and Water for essentially an environmental review and they provide some recommendations in their report. And so two of those recommendations ended up as specific conditions. So based upon the observed soil type in the area, they advised doing some geotechnical studies to ensure that when the foundations go on those lots, that it will be done in a way that supports the, you know, the integrity of the homes that are going to be built on those lots. And so with condition number one, we're advising the developer to take those precautions. Number two, high water table note on the record plat, that was another recommendation from Butler County. So to ensure that the basements stay dry with a higher water table, just advising that the builders take precautions with that. Condition number three is to establish a conservation easement for the southernmost open space parcel. Yeah, so this would just ensure in perpetuity that that region where Lick Run runs, that everything within this portion here would be put into a conservation easement. So that would be off limits for any future development. Number four, the extra street trees on Lake Forest Drive, I already mentioned. Number five would ensure that there'd be no driveway access directly onto Lake Forest Drive. So all of the individual residential driveways would either be off of Timber Cove Trail or East South Point Parkway. Number six is a pretty standard condition that gets attached to almost every subdivision request nowadays. HOA documentation would be reviewed by the law director. And then we move on to the waivers. So number seven, this is a reduction in street width. So just a little bit of background on this. So the subdivision regulations have typical sections for public streets when they're going in. Now, the open space residential development allows for variation, so long as the city engineer has no issues with it and the city engineer has reviewed this proposal and hasn't expressed any issues. This is actually not new. So South Forest Edge Section 2 to the south, the 21 lots, was approved to have a 28-foot-wide street section for that particular subdivision. And what this is basically doing as well is it's matching the section for the existing Lake Forest Drive in the area. So with that, we're recommending a waiver from 30 feet to 28 feet for the street width. Condition number eight is accepting a reduced connectivity index. The connectivity index, it can get rather technical. Essentially, it's number of nodes divided by number of links. A node is an intersection or cul-de-sac head. A link would be any segment connecting nodes. So you do the math and there's a minimum index of 1.2. This design ends up being 0.75. And given all of the environmental features in this area, the steep slopes, the stream, the pond, it's really preventing any sort of connectivity out in, you know, three out of four directions, right? Northeast and south. So I think this is just the situation that, that calls for a waiver to that requirement. Going back to this slide, there's two specific setback requirements that are tied to an open space residential development that would actually need to be waived. The first one is a front setback along an existing city street or road. It mandates 35 feet and what the developer is asking is to set it at 25 feet. And by doing so, this would match the front yard setbacks on the other public streets that are proposed. So Timber Cove Trail, East South Point Parkway, it would all match in terms of front setbacks. And then number 10, so the open space residential mandates a 50-foot setback from the subdivision boundary. Because the remainder parcel is over here and isn't technically part of the subdivision, it's just remaining land, I feel like it's acceptable to just match the rest of the rear yard setbacks and not have to have a 50-foot rear setback. to just match the rest of the rear yard setbacks and not have to have a 50-foot rear setback for those particular lots. So staff is in agreement with that request. And then finally, number 11, this is just a summary of all of the waivers that would be needed to the R2A district standards. And again, an open space residential development allows for waivers to be considered to these. So the minimum lot width and frontage, this is just matching whichever is the most, the smallest width based on the proposal that's been brought forward. So that's reducing from 60 feet to 47 feet. Maximum lot coverage bumping up to 60%. Building coverage, 25 to 50%. Maximum front yard coverage bumping up from 25 to 40. And then with the minimum front and rear yard setbacks, adjusting those from 30 feet each to 25 for the front yard and 20 for the rear. And that concludes the recommendations. And I suppose that concludes the report overall, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Oh, we've got questions.
I'm sure you do.
I know two of us do. I'll be nice and I'll start over here. Ms. Webster, Mr. Cruth, do you have any questions for Mr. Moore?
This is a little random, but within Scott Otto's report, he mentions that a public improvement bond will be required for infrastructure improvements. Could you elaborate on that?
Yes. So that's a standard requirement for any project that has a substantial amount of public infrastructure. We require financial security to ensure that if the improvement is not actually constructed as planned, that the city would have a financial means to go in and actually complete the project. So yeah, that's a pretty typical standard requirement.
So you're not saying that it needs to be, no bonds need to be issued. It's only in the event that the developer, what's, what's the mechanism?
It's a surety bond.
It's a surety bond? Okay.
Yeah, whatever, whatever financial security is acceptable to the law director. That's a standard part of the process. We ensure that that is in place before we actually sign off on the plat. That enables the plat to be recorded.
I had one other thing, which is that I was sort of surprised when you showed the overlay of the, the lots, that where the lots in the north meet the pond, there, there's like no buffer. So how is that going to work? I mean, the property line is contiguous with the edge of the pond, or?
That's actually an interesting point. Yeah, that did not come to mind when I was reviewing the proposal.
And additionally, how does the pond drain? Like, that one would think that would be a concern.
That would definitely be an engineering question. I am aware from the application that the pond would actually, in addition to just being an amenity, that it would look, you know, aesthetically beautiful. It would hold water. It would continue to hold water, and it would be used for water quantity and quality purposes. In terms of how the drainage function overall would work, I would leave that for, I'm sure Ms. Reed could answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Much better than I could.
I'm curious, can you talk about the tree removal, the old growth versus what's kind of the replacement? Do you have an approximate number that we would know, or what's being kind of taken out from that perspective? What might come down?
That's actually a good point. So in terms of, like, the tree surveying requirements, is that kind of what you're asking about?
Yeah, I think that's part of it, right.
So for a single-family lot, the front and side yards are exempt from any surveying. And actually, this may have been an oversight on my part, because usually the tree survey, the exemption for tree survey is acknowledged in the conditions. I think in this case, it was acknowledged in the report, but I may have omitted it by accident from the list of conditions. So by the time you take away all the exemption areas, the places where infrastructure would be going, the streets, the utilities, the front and side yards of the lots, you know, the, the overall footprint, if you will, of the, the building envelope that would resolve where all this construction activity would be, would be happening, you know, it's going to be largely contained to a footprint that is kind of, kind of in this general vicinity here. So, you know, by having a conservation easement down here and by keeping kind of the grading activities situated further to the north for the lots and the streets, I think, you know, the idea is that there would be, there would certainly be a lot of trees that would be kept, but there would be some that would have to go. And by exempting the tree survey requirement, you're not kind of tallying up every single tree that has to inevitably sort of come down in order to accommodate the development. But I think by reserving the open space in this way, by kind of, you know, keeping this region off limits here, by not including it as part of the subdivision, by kind of allocating the creek and the associated vegetation to the open space, you know, there will be some considerable vegetation that will be preserved. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Is there, are there standard species that are used for, say, street trees or that are required as part of the single lot?
So we have a, a tree list that we go by for street trees. So it would have to be off of that, that tree list for the tree species. And we use that same list for the front yard trees as well.
Okay, so I'll jump in. I had a question about the, did you want to?
No, no, no.
The rezoning versus the subdivision. And, and recognizing that our zoning map doesn't always conform with property boundaries, you pointed out those horns, but often it does. So I guess I took the presentation for me to get that they're asking for a rezoning that kind of splits the subject parcel and maintains some of the R4 in anticipation of the boundary of the subdivision. And so I guess my question is, is, I mean, I, I'll get into my comments later. I'm really happy to see rezoning here because I, I was always, I never felt the R4 conformed with anything other than the development agreement that was made. I guess my question is, why not rezone the entirety of the parcel? But that's, you know, why slice and dice this piece of property in the middle zoning-wise?
I think that, that would be a question best left to the applicant, because they're the ones sort of putting forth the proposal. They're kind of dictating, you know, we want the rezoning to be limited to just the land that is being subdivided. And the property is presently zoned R4, so they're entitled to the rights of the R4 for the entirety of the, what is it, the, the 37 acres that zoned R4. So that would be, you know, a larger ask than what they're asking for, to ask for the additional acreage.
I guess, was it part of the conversation in the process? Okay.
No.
All right. And then the last is just a detailed question, just about the, the conservation subdivision says there needs to be a site analysis of the natural features. Is that what the Butler County, does that basically stand in for that site analysis?
More or less, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Some of the things might be addressed by questions you asked, so I might hold off on some and see how you address it. But here's, here's one simple one. Is the pond area included in the open space? And if so, what percentage approximately do we think it makes up?
We could turn back to the slide. So I might go back to this one right here. So yeah, anything that's green would be open space. So you can see the boundary of the pond. So looks to be all included within the open space.
Yeah, I was just wondering how that worked, you know. Could you claim open space if you literally used all the area around the pond? Because the pond was so big, it made up 75% of the area. And then you wouldn't really be preserving anything. But not necessarily applicable here, just general thought.
So I was actually curious, you know, water, like, how that counted for open space? Because I know, you know, a shared, the, a different state, but I know people who own 100 feet into the lake, and I know people who own six feet back from the beach. So like, with that as it being shared space, I didn't know if, I just never have seen water calculated in open space other than created with some of the other subdivisions. So yeah, I was just curious how that factored in. Is there a difference between dirt and water?
In terms of how specific Oxford's code gets, I mean, I think it's acceptable to count, you know, a natural feature like a pond, even an existing one, as open space. I'm aware of at least one community where if you're doing a detention basin for stormwater, where it's dry, where there's no water in it, that it can't, it can't actually count toward the open space because it's not really contributing anything of aesthetic value. Whereas if there's a retention pond that maybe is serving a stormwater function and retains water, that is more aesthetically pleasing and contributing to the overall open space environment, that that can count. So in this instance, since it would be surface water still, would continue, I think it's acceptable to count it toward the open space.
Okay. And this, this is probably more for people watching. Just to reiterate, these are two different issues, but in the interest of repetition, you are presenting them together. So we've had this a lot where people, I want to rezone it because I want to do this. And it's like, those are two, two different conversations, but in the greater scheme, I just wanted to reiterate that. I did have a question about the zoning, very similar to Dr. Prithrich. When I saw, when I got the packet and I looked at it, I, I was a little surprised because Vice Chair and I have been around for eight years plus. So we were part of Lake Forest. I, when, when we approved the southern parts of Lake Forest, those were supposed to be plotted, you know, everything was supposed to be separated. So it's, it was kind of a shocker to me to see the giant parcel with, you know, a couple different zoning designations, because in my little squirrel brain, it was already divided. So, and, and we will definitely ask Ms. Reed, but I can't think of any parcels. I mean, large parcels obviously are more subject to this, but there's different zoning standards for different zoning regulations. So how many parcels or, or is it common to have parcels with different designations? And if so, how do I make my backyard R4 so I can have different rules?
It's not common. It's a bit unorthodox, I would say. We try to avoid it whenever we can. I think in this case, if I were to try to summarize the reason for it, it had to do with the plan unit development originating with Butler County, and then the land later being annexed in. And so there was, and the staff report kind of goes into the history a little bit, because there was an effort to try to find the closest resembling city zoning classification that would match or align with the previous PUD that had been granted. And then later, there was a rezoning to change all of the R3 zones on the south part of town, this part of town, from R3 to R4. So the R4 was created as a separate zoning district meant for outlying areas. So it's gone through quite an evolution of zoning history to get to this point where we have, you know, three different zones. On this one parcel, there's only two different zones.
Yeah.
It's R4 and R2A. But considering the entirety of the land that's owned by Four Leaf Development, it's the three, R1A, R4, R2A.
But there would be a parcel line. And if this is approved by council, there will be a parcel line where that zoning line would be with the new plat.
Yes, yes.
If I, when I was looking at the map, I think there was some continuity where this would, would it be connected?
But yeah, these are not like the, these are not act, they're severable issues, right? Like, when we dealt with the Dudley property, the two were kind of like, they were conditional zoning. These are not. This is a straight-up request for the rezoning. So if the subdivision failed, you would have the zoning line.
Right. Which is why right now we have that arbitrary one in the middle, because again, when we voted on that, I think it was like, oh, this will be replatted.
You could link them together with conditions if you wanted to.
If we're gonna, yeah, because, well, that's more of the discussion opinion. I was gonna say, we have a couple there.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Does our open space residential policy make sense? Like, why couldn't this be an R4 if it's still met the open space? It's almost like, oh, if you serve more people, you can't have open space there. You can't get the benefits from it. Am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, you raise an interesting question. I'm not sure I have a good answer to that that would, I, I really don't know what the truthful answer would be.
I can provide a little context when we get into conversation with, discussion about this, about what the intent of it was.
Okay, good. Yeah, I had the same question as Mr. Bracken.
Yeah, and I also feel like, I had sort of the opposite view. This is becoming less permissive and sort of against, I would argue, the goals that we're moving towards larger. So the idea of making this whole thing R2 doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But the idea of having an open space, reason for doing it makes sense, but should apply universally, I would think.
Yeah. The last question I have, can you go back to pick topography map?
Mm-hmm.
Well, maybe a clue. Okay. So, actually, I'm sorry, go to the one with the numbered plats. There we go.
This one?
So if I understood correctly, and I know, I know Lick Run goes in and out of the property a few times, the conservation area would be from, basically where the current driveway is, and that path that winds up between 13 and 14?
Correct. Everywhere that's green here, leading up to the cul-de-sac, all of this.
Okay. And this is a sticky wicket, because again, the first thing we have to decide is yay or nay on rezoning. But part of my concern is, what about behind 15, 14 through 16? Because if there's a conservation district and a driveway easement, I could see development there. But then we have, we have setbacks and things of that nature. So I was just curious if in your discussions with the applicant, was there any discussion or consideration of wrapping green space around? Because that's the steepest part of the entire property. It's not going to be buildable.
Yeah. What that would involve would be changing the boundary of the overall subdivision. And I'm not sure if that's something they would be willing to entertain voluntarily to kind of slice off a portion of that remainder, if I go back here. So the 17.8 acres would be everything that is not in color here, not green or yellow. So...
But that wasn't a discussion you had had?
That is not a discussion that we had. But it's, it's an idea.
Okay. No, I was just curious. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So is it possible at all that instead of a zoning change, we could do a waiver for the application of open space developmental benefits? That way, we wouldn't have to change zoning, but we could allow this to get what it deserves for meeting the open space requirements?
I suppose?
Without a code amendment?
Yeah, that sounds more like a code amendment than a waiver.
Yeah.
Because it sounds like what you're suggesting is to change how the open space residential development qualifies, or where it qualifies, and what situations it qualifies, on the fly as a waiver to that very provision.
So along the same lines, if I own an R4 parcel, I can build a three-bedroom ranch there, because it doesn't go over the density or, I think that's kind of his thought.
That's what's weird.
If, if R1 means one unit, one parcel, you know, outside of, you know, ancillary buildings, and then 2 is zero lot duplex, pick your poison, or, and I'm, I'm not talking about PUDs or anything. 3 is, oh, hey, we can have a little triplex, quad, you know, those kind of things. So again, if, if I own 20 acres of R4 and I literally want to put a three-bedroom ranch in the middle of the woods, I, can't I?
So you're getting into the difference between subdivision versus zoning allowance for construction. So if you're going to go in and subdivide under the R4, technically, that could, that could be done, but you would have to meet the provisions of the R4 in terms of lot size and, and, you know, whatever the district standards would entail. And then there wouldn't be any flexibility to that unless you did a plan development.
So I guess the big picture for me, which you sort of just addressed, but I don't know how it exactly played out, two big goals of council are to get more housing and also to preserve open space and conservation area. If you could do as much open space while serving more people simultaneously, that's the best outcome. And yet here, we're making the zoning be downzoned to be able to get the benefits of putting that open space in as a development.
Could this qualify as a PUD versus a subdivision?
Are you saying, is it possible to achieve the same proposal through a plan development? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. I mean...
Yes. Essentially, it's kind of what open space residential is. It's like a more, more permissive form of a plan development. It's like a plan development that we encourage folks to submit for, because we hope that... It's like a plan development that we encourage folks to submit for because we hope that there's enough incentives sort of baked into the, the option that we, we are able to achieve a number of the goals that we have, like for conservation, for reserving sensitive environmental features, for, you know, allowing for development more creatively, more flexibly. So in a lot of respects, it's like a plan development.
So I guess I, we have an application before us that I'm. Maybe we can stay focused on and, and.
I think this is because my votes will depend on solutions available.
Okay.
So, but.
Well, and, and a number of the questions we threw at you, you very wisely threw to Ms. Reed. So if there's no other questions about the proposal or maybe mechanics at this point, or anything that we missed, I think we'll invite Ms. Reed up to help clarify some of our curiosities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening. Etta Reed with Bear Becker, 110 South College Avenue, here on behalf of Four Leaf Development. I didn't have a presentation prepared. I was here to answer questions. It sounds like we have a lot, so I guess it's good that that was the plan. So I can answer some that I have heard and we'll start there and see where we go. So with regards to Mrs. Webster's questions regarding the pond, yes, the rear yard, the rear property line will go up against the pond. Once we have a final location on the pond, we'll, we'll fine tune those property lines. But all the detention and water quality that will be taken care of in that pond will be in a HOA drainage easement. And so if it encroaches on a property line into someone's yard, it'll, you know, that's not uncommon. All those lots, we are asking for a 20-foot rear yard setback, so the property owner essentially can't really do anything in that last 20 feet anyway. How does the property drain? How's that pond drain? Can I have?
Can we have the slides back up?
Presenting back up. And so, remind me, which button is?
There's arrows if you need to flip between the slides and then there's a red for the.
So here, here's the outline of the pond. The pond essentially spills over this way and then drains down into Lick Run and the Four Mile Creek. So when we get in and do the official drainage calculations with this, which the city engineer will sign off on to modify the pond to accommodate the detention and water quality requirements, we will more than likely need to modify the outlet structure. So there'll be some sort of an outlet structure and a spillway which will allow that property to flood out towards the Lick Run. So I hope that answers your questions. Okay. Let's see here. You are correct, Zach. We, neither one of us caught the fact that the waiver of the tree survey. So when we do vote for the approval or the recommendation of approval tonight, we would ask that you add a condition for the waiver of the tree survey, if you would. With regards to the rezoning, why are we rezoning? And so I think staff can tell you, we've had numerous discussions with them regarding this property. It was our original intention to do an open space subdivision, but under the R4. But when we were looking at it and talking to Zach and staff, it, we, we had to go to the R2A because if you read the open space development, the R, the open space development is only permissible in the single and two-family zoning districts. So even though I was, we were wishing to do a single-family residential development, we couldn't do it because the property was owned R4. So that is why we have to rezone because it's our intention to do it this way. I mean, is that, would you agree with me, Zach? That's the way.
Yeah, more or less. It prevents them from having to submit this as a plan development proposal. So certainly it could remain R4 and this could be entertained as a plan development. But I think the developer wanted to take advantage of the open space residential option as opposed to the plan development.
Correct.
So, and my question was, why split the parcel down the middle as opposed to rezoning the entire parcel?
They, as staff has indicated, and as you're aware, we have been here twice before for South Forest Edge 1, South Forest Edge 2. Those did not proceed due to just really the expense of the sewer. And we want to make sure that, they want to make sure there's a market for it. So don't go in and rezone all this because it is a downzoning. So let's go in with 34 lots, sell them, and then we can be back. You know, we have a stub headed to the north, so when this is successful, we can come back.
Would, would Four Leaf be open to, and, and actually I saw the stub going to the north, so the northern part made a ton of sense to me. But that, that kind of, I guess it would technically be, of course, it's on a diagonal road, so technically be the, well, let's go with southeast corner. Right by the lots, the three, the three.
These here.
If we were going to rezone, like however we could do a straight line down from the Y and driveway or over Tomato Tomato. Because as I look at that, the up, the northern part makes a ton of sense even for a smaller R4 development, depending on what the homeowner does eventually. But just that area, I mean, that's really close to Lick Run and the topography. Would there be any interest or appetite for adding to that? Because I think that would also, with our newfound education on water counting or not counting, I just, it's, it's really not usable land. So would there be an opportunity to just include that corner or most of that corner?
At this time, their intention was to, because it is very steep terrain. Their, their intention is to keep it with the existing home that's there now, allow it to be part of their property, allow them to utilize it as they wish. So that's, you know, we exceeded the open space development. We don't need that land to, to develop these four, 34 lots. So the intention was to keep it with the cabin.
Okay. Am I reading it correctly? Is the cabin property basically kind of a pinch around the top? It's all of the R4?
Yes, it's basically what's left.
Okay.
A question. I, I'm not quite understanding the dimensions of the conservation easement. Could you elaborate on how that works or what the intent is?
So I, I think I'll take team this with Zach. The intent of the conservation easement is to keep the, that area of the property in the open space as natural as possible. So we haven't worked out the verbiage of the conservation easement, but the way I've seen them in other communities is that it'll say things like, you cannot, you can only take out the dead trees. You can't just go in and do clearing without the permission of the easement holder. But you can take out if they're going to cause harm to anyone or if they're dead, they can be removed. And there's just a lot of language about keeping it in its natural state.
But what is its dimensional configuration? Is it just, it runs on each side of the waterway or?
I think it's on the southern part.
If we could go to the slides just for a moment, thank you. So I'll use the hand cursor from my laptop. So essentially my vision for it was that it would be contiguous with this green area here. So this would become its own parcel, but it would be an unbuildable parcel. It would be an open space parcel. So having that easement language pertain to an easement that would be contiguous with this parcel would provide some extra protection for that region to ensure that no future development should occur on that land. I chose to leave the easement off of the northern parcel because if and when this remainder comes in for development, there may be some adjustments that might be necessary to that open space to accommodate whatever potential development may come in there where the easement that would have been established would conflict if there were an easement there. So unofficially, I think it's fair to say that in large part, whether it's in the easement over here or not in the easement and left on the cabin property or even on this northern open space parcel, that anything that's not yellow here is going to be preserved in large part.
So I have a technical question for you. Whether it's specifically earmarked as an easement or just factored into the open space calculation where the word remainder 17.8 is, if the green space up there is being preserved for any adjustments, any adjustments there would impact what's being approved. So one could argue they can't be adjusted because it would have to be amended. So if, if we're approving something based on the, the pond area being part of, you know, green space, open space, you know, kind of how things are laid out, in some sense you could argue that whatever they want to do with R4, that can't be touched unless council or, or planning says, yeah, we'll, we'll change that. Because otherwise we could do whatever we want, you know, in sequence.
I would agree with that in theory, although you could say if there's a buffer percentage that it would cross over into not applying. But it's something to consider because if we consider this based on X amount of green space and that isn't confirmed green space going forward, then.
If I can use your green space for my green space.
So I guess my procedural question is, when do we close out the public hearing or invite public comment so we can have our own conversation? Because we're kind of blending into that. I just want to make sure we're.
No, but, but I, those are things.
That's a question.
That is a question, not, not for us to figure out. I, I definitely want to know.
So when I mentioned earlier about not doing an easement on the northern parcel, just to make sure that, you know, should there be, and this is only if, if there is a need to slightly, make slight adjustments to the property boundary that those could be done at the time of a future subdivision request for the northern portion, when that portion develops. So I wasn't thinking in terms of like significant variation or significant diminishment of the percentage of the open space. It's more than being met because it's only 35% that's required and there's 50% that's reserved. So even if it were to decrease by.
Does that establish a new property line?
That's what I was going to ask. Could new properties built above it extend all the way to the pond, just like the ones below it extend up to the pond?
Because the way, the way I see it is that green space is part of the HOA which has a common boundary.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that would have to be entertained as part of a future preliminary subdivision and then also a replat. Because effectively, by doing this subdivision in this way, you're going to be plating everything within the 18 acres. And that includes the parcel around the pond. So if that parcel has to be changed, then that's a replat of that parcel.
Okay, so there's not a right to it. It would have to be.
Okay.
Okay, makes sense.
I have one last question. This is more curiosity. If we can pull up the map again.
Map again?
She's getting killed.
There we go.
Right below the word way in driveway. I was just curious for either of you, that phantom green space on the other side of the driveway. Was that, was that for a coverage or, or a calculation?
No, it was just, I, I, I would have to think about it. I really don't know why specifically.
Again, it, it's more, it adds to the green space, so I thought that was good. But I was just curious because, I mean, it's not even a buildable parcel.
No, no.
Yeah, or, or go down to, I think that's parcel 14 or 15.
Don't limit our green space.
No, I was just, it's arbitrary.
You don't want 50%, I can reduce it if you'd like.
So, no, okay. I just didn't know if there was something with like the easement where it had to be on either side or I.
No, but I do want to add that it is going to be a driveway and utility easement.
Okay.
That way, if they, if that cabin needs to run electric, any utilities, they'll have the right to do so in that easement also.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, we'll let you off the hook. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, if there's anybody from the public who would like to comment on this, I will gladly entertain up to three minutes. Mr. Webb, wow.
Sure. As you can imagine, I've been involved in a number of these meetings as working on this subdivision over the last year or so. And I'd just kind of like to address Mr. Bracken's concerns about the difference between the R2 and the R4A. A lot of our zoning code is kind of written in a vacuum and we have all these numbers and all these requirements. And I think it's really evident, the, the difficulty is evident here. Even to develop all of this property in R2A, we need waivers to lot coverage. We need all these waivers to try to develop it in an R4 manner and provide parking, which is mathematically impossible. So in theory, yes, shouldn't we be able to have a cluster R4 development? It would be an entire rewrite of the R4 or an entire rewrite of the subdivision, open space development, because there's just no mathematical way you could get anywhere near it. We need all these waivers just to do two families right now.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you volunteering for the subcommittee with the consultant to rezone. Come on up. If you would state your name and I will start the clock as soon as I can figure out how, so.
Certainly. Jacob Schulte. Current address is 3898 Woodruff Road, Oxford, Ohio. I'm in the Oxford Township. So good evening, chairman and members of the Oxford Planning Commission. I'm speaking in support of this proposed zoning map amendment and preliminary subdivision. As I alluded to, my family farm is on Woodruff Road. My grandfather moved up here in 1966. Next year we'll be celebrating 60 years of being here in Oxford Township and we look forward to celebrating another 60. Bringing all that up to say, I'm attempting to be a good steward and neighbors of this future development on the northwest portion of the city limits. We want to make sure that, you know, as, as we are rural township residents, what we're doing is compatible with the future developments here in Oxford. Generally, I believe that this proposal checks a lot of the boxes within the city of Oxford, between the comprehensive plan and a lot of other things that were outlined. The conservation parcels are very large. They support the protection of a lot of the green space, a lot of the waterways, a lot of any of the other water easements and any of that sort of drainage and water runoff. Preservation of a lot of the natural woodlands, as was referenced a lot in tonight's meeting, there's a lot of really steep topography and a lot of natural vegetation there. These green spaces and the conservation areas really protect and reinforce that. And it's really complements that transition between the R4 of what's already there with annex and Level 27 apartments down to more of a single-family detached subdivision moving forward into the A1 agricultural that will remain there on Oxford Township. So kind of speaking to that in particular, you know, it's a really good transition area. From the neighboring perspective, kind of that, that lack of nodes and connectors and the ask for that variance is really supportive. Just makes sense with the topography. So again, you know, I'm here on behalf of some of the neighboring properties around Woodruff Road to support this development. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right.
So you want a motion?
Is there anybody else who would like to say anything? All right, seeing none and apparently.
Motion to close public hearing on PC 202509.
I'll accept a motion to close. Dr. Pratherich with the motion?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, seeing no opposition and turning off the alarm. All right, I started with you guys last time. I will start with Dr. Pratherich and Mr. Bracken this time.
Well, you know what I would say to this, and, and I kind of agree with Mr. Schulte, that this is zoned R4. And Oxford, we've always been in support of, we've wanted more housing and more density, but our plans have always tried to focus that on infill development. And even though our comprehensive plan now kind of talks about this as urban neighborhood, I think that this zoning category, we can talk about this, was intended to be kind of a transitional area. This was not meant to be high-density urban area. This was conservation subdivision of the, of the style that if you're familiar with planners Randall, Aaron, like it's, it's rural by design. And so this was, I think that there was always a disjuncture between what I think our comprehensive plan and the community said should be happening out here. And, and the zoning was kind of the product of a process that happened 20 years ago between the developer and the county. And it was a very ambitious vision of a through, through road and high density. And I, and I think that the reality of the market and everything is, is that it's, the zoning's been out of step with what the comprehensive plan vision was for, I think, this part of town and what the, the market realities are. So I'm all for density. I, I, I mean, I, I, I would prefer that that density not all be 100% auto-reliant, which is what this is out here. You know, everything that gets developed out here is 1.5 miles until you even hit the mile square. So every person who lives out here is in a car back and forth. So I think that I'm all for density, but, but I'm not sure that at the far edge of the community nestled by a pond is where we should have it. So the fact that the, the developer wants to voluntarily downzone this and take advantage of our conservation subdivision. Mr. Perry, have we had anybody use this portion of the code yet? You write a portion of the code in hopes that people will use it. No one ever did. But the point of the code was, and I might as well talk about this now, was to incentivize people to conserve and get some density in, in return and waivers on, on dimension, on some of the things like streets to minimize the infrastructure. It's a shame that no one's pursued it, but I think it's a. It's a shame that no one's pursued it, but I think it's a still useful tool in the toolbox. And I think R2 plus conservation subdivision is, makes a lot of sense to me. And so they've requested it. I, you know, I'm fully in support of this. It's something, we actually had subcommittees talking about this 10 years ago, Steve Dana, like, should we think about rezoning this? But we kind of, we didn't want to infringe on the property owner's rights, but that property owners come around to thinking that something less is better lines up with the city's goals, I think. So thank you.
I think the weirdness comes in that most zoning I think of as being like up to. It's restrictive after a certain point, not beforehand. And that a lot of the things that come with R4 aren't stipulated on what you actually build, but are just set, right? So you can't do less. That to me is weird and I think probably needs to be addressed. And probably too many waivers required to do something that is generally good. I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'm in support of zoning change in order to expedite, you know, an opportunity for more housing in Oxford. I guess, you know, just a side note is I feel that the natural beauty of the site really isn't being exploited in this plan. And I just wanted to say that. I feel like the pond should be a feature that everyone can enjoy. And, you know, that in developing this further, I would hope that these natural features would be exploited so that it's really beautiful development.
I'll say I support the general conservation of the site. I think it does a lot to hopefully conserve the riparian corridor that's there. And that, you know, the water runoff issues can be addressed through hopefully, you know, natural infrastructure as much as possible. Yeah, other than that, I think, I think in terms of supporting just further meeting the goals of the comprehensive plan, I think this is, meets those goals through this.
So again, just fun refresher that technically the first item, what we're actually discussing now, I mean, again, for ease, we could discuss both, but technically the open agenda item is just the rezoning. So speaking to that, much like Mr. Bracken, like, you know, if, if we're going to rezone something in a parcel, you know, I like the delineations. I like the clarity. So with that, my only concern, well, I should say, I have one concern and then one wish list, is I respect keeping that little fantail southeastern part attached to the cottage or that parcel for now. I don't know if there's a way to have a condition on the rezoning that like if that ever changes or develops. And the beauty of it, and if Ms. Reed didn't think of this, she can still take credit, is that would factor into the green space of a future R4 development because it is attached. So again, I, I know you can't do a whole heck of a lot with it, so as long as it stays how it is, I'm fine. But like the continuity and mapping, so my only, or my question or the concerned part I have, if staff and legal can help, could we have a condition on the rezoning that this has to be platted? You know, if it doesn't get built as proposed, it, to Dr. Berthrich's point, could it revert back? Or could we have something where, great, you didn't build the development as planned, but this part is R2 now, so it becomes one big parcel like on its own? I want, I want as much flexibility, but I also, again, like I said, when I got the packet and I was looking and I'm like, wait, we rezoned that part R2 and I thought that was a different parcel. It didn't occur to me that when the development never moved forward, the plating never happened.
So you raise, you raise an interesting point. In fact, we just did something like this with 6099 Fairfield Road, which that was a planned development, but there was a condition of the planned development that said, if this development never comes to pass, that the zoning would revert back to its prior designation. So I suppose from a planning and zoning point of view, I don't see any issue with that.
Could we say that?
But that condition would have to be a part of the subdivision, not the map amendment itself. The map amendment can't have conditions attached to it, but I suppose it could be a condition of the...
Well, that's not fine.
Do we have to do the other one first then? Is that even plausible?
Technically, we have to rezone it before we can...
It would just, I mean, I think that it's kind of a little bit apples and oranges. The case that we're talking about on Fairfield Road was an upzoning related to a land use that we found desirable, but the alternatives were, you know, maybe less desirable, so we tied it. You know, I've been hoping to see this piece of property downzoned from R4 for 10 years at least, 20 years. So I wouldn't support, like, to me, I think if we get the downzoning here to something that still provides appropriate density. I'm like, so to me, I don't, I'm happy to have this opportunity for them to want to rezone this. And so I don't know why I would attach a condition to that.
How about we look into it between now, how about we look at it into between now and council? Because I can see from an administration standpoint that having a property line that follows a zoning boundary makes a lot of sense. And having a zoning boundary that is just hanging out in the middle of nowhere is not really good for record-keeping purposes.
Yeah. Because where's it planted?
And if we can potentially have a condition on the zoning map amendment because of the, the technicalities of administering a zoning map, then I think we probably should. But I don't think we can answer that right at this moment.
I do, I mean, that's a separate issue from what I'm talking about. But I, I 100% agree. I think there's just like a cleanliness issue that's going to be a problem. Assuming that goes forward, there'll be a property line there. This, I mean, if it were up to me, I would, you know, I think the whole parcel should be rezoned to R2 as opposed to, yeah, so. I think we need to clean up something so that if the thing doesn't happen, there's a logical line.
I think we're on the same page because if it doesn't develop, now we have another, is it 10 feet from the pond, 30 feet from the pond? Do I spin around, you know, so that's my biggest concern.
And also, I think legally, it actually, the previous one that we were just talking about, that we just did, is you're basically saying, you can only change this zoning, which is upzoning, under these conditions. And this one, we're saying, oh yeah, you could do this, but they want to downzone it. But we couldn't go back because we went like, by right, that, that seems legally questionable to me.
Well, that's the difference between a planned development and a subdivision, because with the planned development, you have more negotiating power.
Sure.
The subdivision is more of a, if you follow the rules, then you get it approved.
Yeah.
That's, it's on that end of the spectrum.
Yeah.
So I, because, because council, you know, has to approve the recommendation, this would give the law director and other folks time. I would, I know we can't have a condition, or you're saying we can't have a condition, but if we could have a condition or something in there that says, you know, our recommendation is to rezone this area, however, there needs to be delineation, you know, either with plating, whether you divide it 16 ways and two green ones or one big one, gee golly, you know, because I, I don't want a reversion back because I could see that being an abuse tool.
I guess what I'm just, I guess we could do that legally. I'm looking at the piece of property and, and the boundaries that they've established are not illogical boundaries. It's like the northern edge of the pond. It's basically a ravine to the east. So if, even if you were to arbitrarily draw a line apart from the property lines, they're kind of natural break points for development. So if the development doesn't come forward, it's going to be a little bit weird, but it's not like it's an illogical way to draw.
The reason I'm probably compulsive about this is I remember a simple proposal of extending a gable on my roof and that involved figuring out where the pins and points and easement and all that was in the city. I at least have curbs, gutters, sidewalks and things to play with a tape measure out there. Is it a tree? So that, that's my concern is we don't have, like, Lake Forest is the last man-made thing you can say, oh, 33 off-center. You know, so that's my big concern is these are literally lines through a field and woods.
So for what it's worth, I think it would make sense sharing. So when it comes to the rezoning request, we did receive a survey, a rezoning survey plat that had bearings and distances on it, if I recall correctly. So if you wanted to call up Ms. Reed again to maybe add some clarity in terms of, because I, it's my understanding that the boundary that would sort of bisect this site and divide it between R2A and R4 would be rather defined. Like it wouldn't be just, you know, a line on a crude image, like it's, it looked like it was more precisely defined.
We could do a lot split and rezone the split off.
I suppose.
I'm just like, are we over, I just, are we overthinking this?
No.
I mean, I, like, I just, there's a, there's an application before us and I guess we have to...
We have to separate them. What they want to do with the property is, is not part of a zoning consideration.
Yeah, so let's talk about the zoning first and we can talk about the second thing second.
Yeah.
So we have a request to rezone based on some deline, I mean, are the, the boundaries delineated enough so that if we adopted the map, we could live with them? Okay. So then it's a matter of the decision criteria.
You can adopt the staff findings if you don't have any changes to them.
Okay.
What we're just talking about is a...
I, I'm personally, I'm only comfortable rezoning it if there's a legal delineation. So however, we have to write that in with a strong recommendation to council. Because again, all I, all I envision is I own the property and I want to do this. Oh, hey, a lot of it's R4, so I want the whole thing under R4 rules because it's, you know.
We, we have a, it's not in the packet, but we have a legal description for the zoning boundary.
Okay.
But we do have it. It has the bearings and distances on it. It's essentially the same as the subdivision plat.
And our zoning map is not surveyed. The boundaries are not surveyed in our zoning map. They are, so I think we've got covered there.
With an extreme occurrence, they are synonymous with property lines.
Yeah, I would prefer they would be synonymous with property lines and that, but that's, it's not necessarily the case. I mean, those, those horns stick up for whatever reasons. So I think that if the boundaries are logical, we can act on them.
All right, so solely on 2025-09, the rezoning map amendment for 17.95 acres, is there any other discussion? And again, I, I'm always reluctant to have the discussion together because human beings put everything in one bucket and then have a hard time delineating it, even if they say they are. And we are literally only talking about whether to change the color and numbers on a map.
Yes.
It doesn't matter if they want to put a farm, unicorns, or a circus.
Perhaps you might want to consider before voting on 25-09, 25-10, to have a motion to consolidate the public hearing and the discussion into one record.
I thought we kind of already did that, but we can do an official motion if you'd like.
You didn't do it by, I don't recall doing it by formal motion.
So I move that we consolidate the public hearing and staff findings and, and discussion for PC 2025-09 and PC 2025-10.
So as a matter, I'll, I'll let you clean this up because we're actually in the middle of an agenda item, so.
Well, well, I think it's fine that you're doing it now.
Okay.
Because you're, you're making a record of what you've done. It'll be reflected in the minutes. And then you can proceed to your individual motions on...
So we have a motion to formally acknowledge what has already happened.
No, consolidate, consolidate that the public hearings is applicable to both 25-09 and 25-10.
Was that Ms. Webster on the second?
I'm second.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So are you ready for a motion on the? All right, so now going back to what we were already discussing. But this is still the vote on this, so we, we only combined discussion and presentation. We did not, we did not combine motions because we can't.
So I would move PC 2020, move approval of PC 2025-09, 1709 Lake Forest Drive zoning map amendment from multi-family residential R4 to single and two-family residential R2A.
Second with a friendly amendment that we have some delineation and/or investigation by legal and staff prior to city council consideration.
And the amendment?
Perfect. So we have a motion and a second. I'm excited. I never get to make a motion or a second, so I'm really, really excited here. Mr. Perry, will you call the roll?
Sure.
Or Mr. Moore, sorry.
No, I'll go ahead. Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Berthrich?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. What?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Moving on to 2025-10, 1701 preliminary subdivision, as previously recorded, we have already had the presentation and discussion, so we don't have to technically adjourn the public session again. So we can just talk about it. So, anything additional for the greater good or considerations?
I'll just come back again to the, I mean, the purposes of, of conservation subdivision in theory is, is it's a more site-specific form of development. You're supposed to actually pay attention to the site. I mean, I've, we've worked with the developers who it's a blank piece of paper. They haven't walked the site. It's just a mathematical exercise. It's designed to be, you hope that people go through stages of identifying the features and then designing in the least sensitive sites. And that's what the, the site development thing is, is supposed to be for. I, I think that like the Butler County Soil and Water District helped identify that, so it's not building on the sensitive features. I'm, my, Ms. Webster, that it's not the most context-sensitive. It could be more context-sensitive. But in general, I feel like it's a, it's a, it meet, this is standard subdivision, so it meets the requirements of the subdivision with only waivers that are relatively minor. And, and I think that it approximates the spirit of what a conservation subdivision is, is it doesn't really cluster the sites. They could, they could be more densely clustered here. But, you know, it builds on the open fields and leaves the woods alone. A significant buffer from the riparian area. It's going to have trails that go around the pond. You know, whether those properties should butt up directly against the pond versus be surrounded by a management entity or something like that. But I'm not going to get into the business of redogging this. I think it, it fulfills the code. It fulfills the spirit of what the, the conservation subdivision, at least when we wrote it, it kind of was intended to be. And, and I think it will be more appropriate to its context than, than some of the stuff that's been built out there. So I'll be supporting this.
Any other thoughts? I'm just going to throw this out. I had a question about the bike trail that I forgot to ask. I'm just curious, and Dr. Berthrich is, somebody's got to build the first sidewalk. I guess this is a question for staff and I'll, privilege of the chair, if Ms. Reed wants to let us know. Is that going to go down Lake Forest or?
It kind of went off the map. I didn't see what happened with the rest of the map.
I forgot to ask that question.
I believe it extends to the...
Does anybody know where the bike trail goes?
Subdivision boundary.
Okay. Well, the reason, the reason I thought of that, funny enough, is a lot of times we always say, oh, well, we can't make, Mr. Bracken pave the sidewalk on Dr. Berthrich's property, but guess what? This is one property, so. I have no, no skin in this game. I just, again, it went off the map and I forgot to ask, so.
It's one of the first things I looked into. I think it was 3,000 feet to reach the...
Yeah, it's pretty long.
Yeah, and you'd have to cross Collins Creek.
Yeah.
And other issues, wastewater, Chris...
Just as this gets, you know, further discussed with other people, just the sidewalk to nowhere. But it does connect well, so. Okay. Do you have anything, Mr. Bracken? One thing I do want to say, and I appreciate Mr. Schulte. He's, he's been very diligent, a great neighbor, definitely sharing with the commission on previous, the southern portion of this property. portion of this property. So I, I really do appreciate, a lot of the things that we look for and that we are trying to accomplish were just baked in the first time, so I'm, I'm actually quite happy. You know, a little, little sad about the southern part and kind of gravity going the wrong way, but I, I think this is a great use. One of the first things that, that impressed me, and it's, it's not rocket science, but I just, I saw the intentionality is, we're always having, I think, it may have been Owl's Landing, forgive me if I'm wrong, but we had, like, a natural water feature, but it was in the wrong spot, so we had to create another one and, and just the design around a natural water feature or just nature, I, I thought that was good, so. I, I think this is good. And I'll gladly accept a motion or more discussion.
No more discussion? Okay, you want the motion?
There we go.
I move approval of PC twenty twenty five ten, seventeen oh one, uh, Lake Forest Drive.
With the waiver of the tree survey?
Yes. Is that enough language for you to, okay?
I was, I was like, we got a good recording.
Put in the standard language.
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you.
And, and my motion presumes acceptance of staff findings.
Yeah, we've got it all recorded, you guys can listen back and figure out what we forgot to add in. All right, if you want to call the roll.
We'll do. Start with Mr. Cruz again?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Petheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and it passes. Thank you very much, appreciate everyone's time. Uh, I'm going to call a five-minute recess, so folks can use the restroom, get a drink, we'll call it the Steve Dana Memorial Honor, Honor. Steve Dana Restroom Break. All right, so we'll be back in five minutes. All right, everybody send, send your last minute texts. Just kidding. All right, we're going to reconvene. Thank you, folks, for the recess. So, moving on, the next agenda item, PC twenty twenty five eleven, Ten North Beach, conditional use indoor entertainment facility. We will hear from Mr. Webb in a second, but at first, I will accept a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
I move, we adjourn to public hearing on PC twenty twenty five eleven.
All right, we have a motion, Dr. Petheridge, do you have a second?
I second.
Ms. Webster with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Moore, he got the floor again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Completely a less complicated proposal to end the evening. This is a conditional use for an indoor entertainment facility at Ten North Beach Street. The applicant for this request is Mr. Scott Webb, architect in town. The property owner is Rodrow Myers, Rodrow Wood LLC. The business owners who are with us tonight, Tyler Store and Jackson Truster. The current zoning of the property, property is, can't talk tonight, UP Uptown District. The site area is a little above eight thousand square feet, and again, this proposal, it's a conditional use to establish a new entertainment facility offering golf simulator bays complemented by an accessory bar. Here's a look at the site location. Here we are now, here's the site, off of North Beach. Here's a look at the current zoning in the area, it's, of course, zone UP, and is within our Uptown Historic Overlay District. Here is an aerial view. So this was the former Princess Theater, and this was later torn down and replaced with a mixed-use building, sits there today, and then here is the proposed floor plan, so this shows you the nine total golf simulator bays that would be installed within the interior of the space, as well as the accessory bar. And we're recommending approval of this application, subject to three conditions. First condition is that any exterior signage associated with this new business would require approval of a COA and a sign permit, it's pretty standard for Uptown properties, and then any exterior modification that would seek to expand the business use beyond the first-floor interior of the building would first require, require a consideration of a minor amendment request. So as is shown in the plans, it really wouldn't be any changes to the exterior adjacent to the alley or from the front, for that matter. All of the proposed changes are located on the interior. And the final condition is really just there for redundancy as well, it's asking that a building permit authorizing the establishment of this entertainment slash assembly use would be obtained prior to commencement of work. Yeah, that's, that's essentially all I have for this one. Happy to take any questions.
I have a question, but I'm also on HAPC, so you knew you were getting questions.
So here's a question, that could be an HAPC-related question, so, but once upon a time, this structure had a marquee, and that marquee disappeared in the redevelopment of, of, of the project, presumably it still exists. If it were to be reinstalled, to what degree could a historical marquee be used for business advertising? I mean, once upon a time, the Princess Theater advertised its showings on a marquee. Would a marquee, if the restored mar-, if the marquee were restored, could it be used for business advertising, or conceivably?
So there's actually, I didn't include this picture in my slideshow, but I believe there's a picture in the staff report of the prior condition. It'd be page sixty-three, if you have your packet available. And it looks like, yeah, there would have been a small, kind of changeable copy portion to that sign, so there was a, kind of like an arc that was blue with princess lettering, and then.
I remember it.
Changeable coffee board. Yes, so I believe there's been, the HAPC has talked about this in the past, Sam, would you care to explain?
So there was a variance case and an HAPC case, and there were, there were several lighting variances and signage variances that had to be approved in order for that to be, that marquee to be used.
The redevelopment at?
No, just for the sign.
Okay.
It was not anything else.
Okay.
So those expired, because it didn't move forward, and the HAPC did not attach a condition mandating that the marquee be used. So whether the city trusted it would happen or the city failed to attach a condition is beside the point, it wasn't required, but the BZA variances for the lighting expired. So if these business owners wanted to do something like that again, it wouldn't be allowed to be electronic, but they would need to apply to the BZA for lighting and signage-type variances.
So the door is not closed to it?
Correct.
If, if, if the business owner, if were to restore the historical marquee, it could conceivably used for the kind of signage that was.
And there are, there have been times where there have been some signage variances within the scope of a conditional use, if it's, if it's such that it's part of the overall discussion.
Okay.
Which is what you're having tonight, but that's not what's been requested.
Okay, but it was probably not on their radar, so, okay, this is just, so, yeah, you're going to hear some history that's beyond you.
Tomorrow at six o'clock, right here, Historic Architecture.
So, okay, that was, that was my only question about that, thank you.
Thank you.
If you ask former Mayor Smith, the, the arch is supposed to be there, but.
It is, yeah.
That's his fight. All right, one question I have for you is, and, and this is just because the last time I remember being in that building or, like, not on the sidewalk in front of the new building was to watch a movie. Is there a liquor license for that spot?
I don't have knowledge of.
I, I'm seeing trustworthy heads. And, and again, that's not part of ours, I was just trying, like, as we're doing the conditional use, that's a whole other process with the city and everybody, so. Okay. I'll wait till Mr. Webb gets up for my next pontification. Anything for Mr. Moore? Mr. Webb, come on up, sir.
I didn't expect to be, have a little preview with the other case tonight. Happy to be here representing this one.
There we go.
Okay. All right, so as always, staff has done a nice job, kind of describing what we're intending to do here. Jackson and Tyler are here this evening, you may recognize them, they were the founders of Oxvegas Chicken, it was their first successful business while they were finishing college, we helped them out with that one, and I'm happy to be helping them again. In the meantime, they purchased the Pilates Studio in town, so, these are, these are guys looking to do something in town, and we want to encourage them, and we're happy to help them here, so. Without getting into too much history of the building, it is kind of an odd shape in there, the, if you've looked inside, there, the floors were anticipating recess for theaters and things like that, so it's, it's a little bit awkward, it's huge, and it has been empty for quite some time. So, so we're intending to occupy the entirety of the ground floor of what's available in Ten North Beach, we feel that it's compatible with the adjacent uses, just simply right around this block between Cofenia, the bike shop, you're fired, Fanchin, even stretching to UDF, we have a huge mix of uses in this area, which was exactly what was anticipated by the UP District, and we feel that this would certainly be a part of it. We'll get into the specific requirements of entertainment facilities in a minute, we're going to talk about parking, so I just thought I'd remind you here that no parking is actually required in the UP District, as you all know, we intend this to be kind of a, you know, we provide public parking, there's uptown parking, there's parking garage, there's street parking, so, you know, and also, even though it's a lot of square footage, we don't expect this to be a really high-density occupancy in the end. So, yes, you're all familiar with the building as it is, this goes back nine years now, 2016, when the building was built, with the intention and the, and the constructed intention, I might add, of putting a theater in this building, it's complicating some of what we're doing here. They were unable to secure a theater operator in 2016, and I think that we are all watching the changes in the entertainment industry, and I don't think it's going to get better for movie theaters anytime soon, I think that ship has sailed, and we're not going to get a theater in this building at this point. So, ten years later, we do have another kind of entertainment facility, an experiential one, which is what people are looking for now, and that's what we're here to talk about this evening, so. So as I said, the building is a little bit cut up, weirdly, the residential exit stair kind of divides the thing in a pretty severe way, about two-thirds of the thing is two feet low right now, meaning it's not currently ADA accessible, so we would have to start by leveling the floors and lifting everything up to make it all level and accessible. We can talk about the HAPC, Mr. Watt, here also. In the original drawings that HAPC approved, there was a note in there that, to anticipate a door, and we're going to need it, this building is way too deep, did not have a second way out, and so we are proposing a little door, whoops. So we are proposing. Which one's the pointer here? Yeah, tucked back in here. You may or may not recognize it, you can see it next time you look at it from the north looking south. This floor up here is obviously right at the sidewalk, the land raises about eighteen inches, so this door will actually be above the ground. Inside the building, it'll be at grade level from the outside, but there, it will be, there's a door coming out of that stairway, it'll be right next to it aligned, so it was at least anticipated in their original HAPC approval, but it is in fact going to be necessary. Their, the intention is to provide nine sort of carols or bays, so to speak, using impact screens. Each carol has the software scorekeeping, all that stuff, they will have the ability to choose different courses, and, and then just kind of provide a small retail area, and then some extra seating for waiting and things like that. We've kind of envisioned this as kind of a mini indoor Topgolf, so, you know, yes, we could have professional or serious, I should say, golfers in the offseason may want to use this, but it could just be an opportunity for you and four friends to go hit something, you know, and into a screen, so we think there's a, a lot of opportunity in this particular arena here. The other issue that came up, and I think was kind of hinted at before, if there ever was a liquor license to this property, it's long gone after ten years, there are other methods by which they can pursue that later, they were able to secure a liquor license for Oxvegas Chicken, and so we're kind of kicking that can down the road, it is a separate application and a separate process from this one, but that is the intention there. So the specific use requirements, our code for conditional uses outlines specific use requirements for each of these so-called conditional uses. This one, indoor sports and recreation facilities, bowling alleys, skating rinks, racquetball courts, soccer fields, swimming pools, you can see that these are all imagining much larger facilities, something that could be a big zoning problem, like a ice arena on Oak Street or something like that. But, so, traffic volume during large group events, we feel is kind of a non-issue, the space isn't that large, this is not a spectator sport, it's a participatory sport, and we don't believe it'll create peak demands. Regulations, entrance shall not be loaded, located your residential district, it's a little ambiguous in UP, we've got residential above us, we've got RO across the street, well, a little bit across the street, I mean, we're still on this side of the alley, but, you know, it's, it, the intention is, we don't want the giant skating rink or tennis facility in Southern Knolls, you know, but I don't think that precludes what we're hoping to do in this particular location. The setback requirements, public parking spaces, all those things are kind of moot in the UP District. Obviously, we're going into a fully developed area and trying to use this space. The decision standards, we feel like we meet them all, we're allowed in the zoning district, meets the intent, compatible with the goals of the comp plan, I won't read them all to you, utilities are in place, everything's there. Like I said, I think that the, the reason that this is a conditional use is because it's really anticipating a much more intensive and much larger sort of an opportunity. This being small, we feel like it should be a fairly easy thing to get behind, and we wish these guys success in getting it started. Be happy to answer any questions.
So I, I do have a couple of quick questions, you were talking about the egress door, and I've, like I said, I've never been inside. Would the, no, if you go back to the one you were on.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Which, would the, would the secondary exit be, okay.
It's right there.
Oh, because you would need the egress on that side of, okay.
Yeah, we just, I mean, there's, there's two requirements for egress by the building code, one is occupancy and the other is distance, how far do I have to go, how far can I go in the wrong direction before I realize I'm in the wrong direction?
Yeah.
You know, so, so, in a sprinkled building, it's one-third the diagonal distance, so from this door, one-third the diagonal distance, within that, greater than one-third, we must have that second means of egress there, so that's what ends up placing it back here. As I said, that exit stair, as it comes down right now, there is an exterior door, obviously, at the end of that, so this one would just kind of be side by side next to it right there.
Okay. Only because we've talked about this at HAPC, this is probably more of a procedural question for Mr. Perry or Mr. Moore. If we approve this from planning, does it automatically procedurally go to HAPC? So that could be something like an egress door is one of those pesky fire requirements?
Well, it would be a building permit and it'd be included with that, but being that this is a nonhistoric building and that door is on an alley, we would not typically put that on an HAPC agenda or require a COA for it.
Correct.
Just for the signage and the exterior changes on the front facade facing Beach Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was anticipated by the original architect, because it was listed on that elevation, the west elevation is full of stuff, there's no room to go there, this is really the only location, and the original architect anticipated that and kind of noted that it would be somewhere back there that we would need to put that extra door, so hopefully, you know, if you know it's coming and we decide to show you where it's put, then hopefully that could be an administrative approval, not a.
That's kind of what I was thinking it would be. Okay. All right, any questions for Mr. Webb? All right, any questions for Mr. Webb?
Like I said, I'm curious, um, what does the back of these screens look like? I'm thinking in particular of just the north windows there and what the view's going to be like coming from the outside.
Yeah, I mean, as, you know, in, in effect, we're kind of doing an adaptive reuse here. I mean, we're kind of working with an existing building. You know, even so, like at CVS, uh, as an example, you know, we put lots and lots of windows around CVS, but that effectively takes up lots of retailing space for the store. So they end up turning those into kind of display windows, so all the windows will kind of stay in place, but it'll be an intentional sort of, uh, screen kind of behind the physical screen. So it will look intentional, and they can even do some, you know, signage or displays or something like CVS, so, you know, we, we maintain our, our street facade, but back behind the window, we're going to have to do something. But the intention is not to take the windows out or cover them, but just simply to leave them and let them remain there.
I mean, is there a danger of like, you know, golf balls, everything chattering the windows kind of a thing, or even, even I can't say that it's a facade?
Yeah, well, I mean, these things are, uh, they're literally called impact screens, and they come with that sort of shroud that I was, uh, sort of attending there, sort of for that purpose. So, I mean, they're meant to take a pretty big hit from a driver.
Lap short, give him, he just watched Happy Gilmore 2.
Yeah, could be a terrible, uh, golf, uh, yeah, just thinking, golf balls going through that front.
Um, so when we do the conditional use, uh, I was just curious, we don't get as excited about the interior design, but, uh, Mr. Cruz's point was there. Is it more infrastructure why the bar is on the side, uh, the south side versus like up in the window area and?
Yeah, so, uh, there's no basement in this building, and so all of the utilities are going to have to be run through the floors. There's a lot of variation in grade. Right now, that's sort of where they had anticipated the restrooms to go. That's the easiest place to kind of keep that going over there. It's also, you know, the entrances are on the south side. It was kind of designed as a in-and-out sort of pair of entrances on the south side. So naturally, you can put my thing back up there again. So the idea, yeah, so the idea here is you'd come in here, this is where you'd check in, then this becomes kind of the waiting area, and all of our, uh, utilities and water functions are kind of centered where they belong, so to speak, so.
That was just my, um, if we approve this as conditional use, uh, staff and the developer have flexibility with some of like, you know, if, I'm just saying, you know, you get in there and realize that like, hey, the plumbing can't go here, but goes here. That's all stuff you guys can fix or talk about later, right?
Yes, yeah. Tonight, we're just talking about this use in this building.
That's, I just wanted to make sure. Just nervous about tomorrow's, no, I'm just kidding. All right, thank you, sir. All right, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? There's nobody from the public here, so I'm going to move on. Uh, I'll accept a motion to close public hearing.
Move we close public hearing on PC 202511.
All right, motion. And do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cruz with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And nobody opposed, so we can chat about it.
This is one of these things like the putt-putt that shouldn't necessarily have to go through a three-step process. Um, I, you know, you, I think you can see why the code envisions that, because if this were a drive-in movie theater, there are uses that would generate significant secondary impacts, and that's what a conditional use is about. You guys technically have to, you're fall under being an entertainment use, so you have to go through all this, but it's not like, nothing here is being generated that's an ounce more than what the movie theater historically would have. So, um, but hopefully you'll get some newspaper press out of it. So, yeah, that's, I, I mean, I, I, when I get to counsel, I'll talk a little bit about the history of the building, which is unfortunate. Um, we did have a theater operator lined up, but the, the, the property owner passed on that. But, um, but, but it's been vacant for a really long time, and, and that vacancy doesn't do anything other than just rub salt in the wounds of the loss of the movie theater that we had. And so it's open to lots of different things, and I know there've been proposals for bars and that kind of stuff, but I know for a fact that, so I teach urban planning. I've had multiple students kind of assess the feasibility and the market potential of golf-related stuff, and I think it's there in Oxford. And I think it aligns with, I know there's a bar here, but this isn't just for drinking. I think it's going to be primarily for this other thing that could be really great for non-drinkers, and so, um, a, a, apart from the, the conditional use, which is kind of a no-brainer, that there really, there's no issues here. That, uh, I'm glad that you guys are doing something with the space. I don't know where that sign is. It should have been reinstalled back on the building. Uh, you, you might want to talk to the property owner and see whether he knows where it is. And, and, and it wouldn't be a cost that you, you would bear, but it could be that you could get good signage if you pursued the restoration of the marquee, you know? Um, I think that, I can't speak for HAPC, but I think the restoration of the marquee, if it, if it were, you know, if
It's come up five, six times in the last eight years. I'm pretty sure at least a conversation would be entertaining.
Yeah, and so you, you could be in a, quite an original form of signage for your building that, that other structures wouldn't have because it's enveloped in this historic, this historic thing that we have. I can't make promises for HAPC, but, yeah, if you could find a way to restore the marquee, the community would be really grateful, and, and you might get some signage out of it. But anyways, that's not anything that adds a condition or anything, but it might be rusting in a field somewhere or in a barn. Who even knows where it is? It was a cool old sign, so.
That was cool. Any other thoughts?
I just want to say it's great when an empty building is proposed to have a new use.
Yes. And it's also great when Miami students stay around to do economic development in our community. We just have this, we train, we train the brains and then they drain away. But, but Cofenia was alums who stayed. You know, fridge and pantry, I'm not sure whether that, you know, um, so, so thank you for sticking with
An alum now?
What's that?
I'm pretty sure Bodega is owned by
Yeah, but Bodega was purchased by the, you know, so thank you for sticking around and bringing fresh ideas to our community and filling up vacant spaces that kind of haunt those of us who were part of the whole Princess story, so.
All right, I will, uh, do we, we don't need me conditions from our discussion. There's nothing, yeah. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve PC 202511.
Motion. Anyone want a second? Ms. Webster with the second. Would you like to call the rule?
Sure.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Petheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. So move. Dr. Bracken? Dr. Petheridge? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are out of here.
Good to see you.
All right.
You can invite me to
Yeah, the snakes door is pretty crazy. Two snake stories.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, someone said it wrapped.
You've been writing a lot of history. I'm taking my daughter off to college on Sunday, and I'm like, I took her to